Good evening, call this meeting to order. If we could please start with a moment of silence for prayer or reflection. Thank you.
So first up, we have adoption of the agenda. I do have an amendment to make to one of the items, which I'll do when we get to it. Item 5.41, it's a 2018 tax auction reserve bid. There are four properties to come off that list, so I shall do that when we get to it.
Thank you, any other amendments, additions? Okay, sing them, adopt the agenda.
Adoption of the minutes, on page four, item 3.1, you'll find minutes from our February 20th meeting.
Any errors, any questions? Okay, sing them.
Moving along now to our presentation, we have a video tonight, which is the fast facts video from the Public Services Committee meeting, which was item 5.3.
Your worship, could I just say a word of introduction?
Yes, thank you.
This is only about a four-minute video, it's not really long. It's extremely well done, to those who worked on it, well, you'll see, my accolades to you. We just wanted to bring it to the rest of council, because not everyone is at the committee meeting, and it really outlines in four short minutes, the depth and breadth of what goes on in the public services area. It's really quite amazing, the extent of the involvement and the work that's done. So that's why it's here tonight.
Thank you. If we could play the video? Very good, we're gonna watch it again. In case you missed some of those numbers. Any other comments? Questions? If we could get a motion for reception.
I'll move up.
I'll second that.
Okay, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Moving on now to reports, our first report's item 5.1, on page 10, Administrative Committee meeting of February 22nd, this report's for information. Still moved.
Second. Comments? Counsel Turnbull?
As, always like the council to recognize when we spend money, how, why we're spending it, and also for the general public. So this is a part of a 30-year program to replace aging infrastructure that we have in our city. Some of our pipes, and water pipes and sewer pipes are as much as 100 years old. So, when we say we're spending money, the money we're spending today was part of the budget, several, 2017, and this is what was left over to finish this section. And so, when you see that we are, we're not, this is not borrowing new money, this is already money that's been appropriated for this particular project, so that's my spiel anyways.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counsel Freezin?
If I could, through the chair, I just had a quick question. I see there's a fair amount of money remaining. Does this represent the completion of everything envisioned for this project, or is there still some work yet to be done?
Commissioner Lance, would you want to answer that question for us?
I was gonna see.
Oh, all right, just gonna answer it, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Through the chair, I was actually going to ask Commissioner Lance if he had, if he had a specific lines. I believe there are other projects left in this as well, because it was a 17, 18 budget period, but perhaps Commissioner Lance can confirm or deny.
Through the chair, that's correct, CAO, that there will be further provisions brought forward as part of the 18 budget.
Any other questions or comments? All right, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Next report's item 5.2, page 14, you'll find the Energy and Utilities Committee meeting of February 22nd, and this report is for adoption.
I move that report for adoption.
Second. Comments? Counsel Turnbull?
I do, your worship. So, when we do, council and citizens, when we do abandonment of wells, we of course take down the wellheads, we cement in the casings, and then, we then have to reclaim the earth back to its original before we started the drilling. So, in some cases, it's just plain grass, some cases, it's different, and we cannot plant anything that's not what was there in previous years. So, part of the reclamation, the abandonment of the wells, one, the reclamation is the soil to bring it back to original state. And I think it's quite interesting that this covers, the cost of these two, 534 wells is about $1.6 million, which comes out of the NGR capital asset funds, and so, it's not a matter of coming here, asking for money, it's an ongoing project. And so, you can see the scope of, as I always say before, the, this is the downside of the oil and gas business. At the end of the life cycle, we must do our due diligence and be in good stewards of the land. So, very proud of the fact that NGPR is doing this, and within their budget restraints, and I think it's putting us a long way for ensuring that we complete our total wells when they finally all run out. Thank you.
Counsel Freezin?
Well, I have a question, I just want to make sure I understand this, and the people at home understand this, because this is a sole source, which, you know, we're always, we always have to look at very carefully, and I'm often reluctant to support. And so, I read this very carefully, and I, it seems to me that you've done a good job of explaining why you had to have, have to have continuity, especially if something covers the lifespan, or a multi-year project, or whatever, so I understand that. I just want to make sure that we continue to put RFPs out at the very beginning phases. You say that in here, but it's not crystal clear, and it seems to me with so many opportunities in the workforce for, you know, for work, that we might be, we're going to get the best competitive prices if we always put it out for RFP at the beginning stage, so I want to make sure about that.
Through the chair, Counsel Freezin? Yes, that's exactly the point, is we would like, we go to RFP when we start a new batch of reclamation jobs, you know, if it's a new area, or something that's starting from scratch, that's the RFP stage. And then, as we work with the companies that are selected in that initial phase, we then narrow it down to those who are doing it most effectively, most cheaply, and that's what these two have proven in the areas that they're working, and that's why we want to continue working with them. So absolutely, the principle that we try to follow is, is to take things to RFP and get competitive bids any way we can. In this case, it really is the cheapest option to continue to use those who have already started the work on these sites, and have proven themselves to be really good suppliers.
Thank you, Counsel Turnbull?
Yeah, it's a follow-up. So it takes five years to get your certificate to abandon and reclamation of a well. And so, we have to send out in our own city people, environmental, to look at there and say, are there weeds going in there that weren't there before, so we have to weed control. So you have to have companies that you can trust are going to ensure that the money we've paid upfront, the job is going to be done at the end of that period. So sometimes, getting things cheap doesn't always mean you're getting things well done. And in this case, if we don't get a reclamation certificate, we're still on the hook, so we then, we'd have to get somebody else. So that's just the point I wanted to make.
Any, oh, Counsel Hirsch?
Just a question in regards to escalating costs on reclamation, knowing that's going right across the province. Is there an ability, have we thought about ways to contract with these individuals, instead of maybe doing a perceived a number, and understanding that there's a sole source to this, but I'm trying to understand, you know, are we, are we looking at increasing costs on abandonment at, you know, years that go down the line, knowing that this is, this is happening all over Alberta, and there's only a finite amount of companies that do this, because of course, we're competing with others that do the same thing?
Through the chair, Counsel Hirsch. It's hard to give a succinct answer, because we're really looking at highly variable costs, because the conditions at every site is a little bit different, and whether you're reclaiming something that's already a plowed field, and you don't have to go back to kind of the original pristine prairie, or, you know, it depends so much on the site conditions. Certainly, the regulatory requirements are getting stricter and stricter, and part of the cost driver for us is that we are reclaiming some old wells, where operating methods are not, were not in accordance with today's environmental regulations. And so, when you had things like spraying water, for example, solution water onto a site, well, we'd never do that now, we certainly did 50 years ago, well, we still have to now reclaim it to today's standard. And so, that's where, it just depends so much on the site conditions. In general, we haven't seen big cost increases, in fact, we, it's sort of a competitive push between, yes, there are scarce resources, but there are also new technologies out there. So we're seeing some more innovative ways of working, we're seeing, you know, different approaches, and we're seeing some economies of scale when we put a big enough contract out there. So I don't think we can say that in general, there's been, you know, significant cost increases here, but the variations are enormous, they can be $10,000, or they can be $500,000, just depending on the conditions at a site.
I just appreciate the last comment on the economies of scale, and that's kind of what I was driving towards, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Next report's item 5.3, page 18, Public Services Committee meeting, February 26th, with items 1 through 3 for adoption.
Your worship, members of council, I would like to move adoption and information as indicated, and I would also like to, as Chair of Public Services, I am going to, the committee is going to take back item number three, the Senior Center Development Project, Accessible Community Garden, because we have some additional questions and information that we would like to seek.
Right. So at the call, Chair, we will, she can pull back item three. Counsel Samraj, just before you speak, I'm going to suggest perhaps, though, that we take out item number two as well, and we just deal with items 1, 4, 5, and 6 at once, and then we can deal with item two? Okay?
Deal with item two separately, sure, no problem.
Sure, Counsel Samraj?
And I'll second that report.
That's where you're gonna go? Okay. So items 1, 4, 5, and 6, Arts and Heritage Advisory Board, the Social Development Advisory Board, the Raising the Curtain and Public Services Division video, which we just saw. Any questions or comments on those four items?
Through the chair, item one is always heartfelt by me when we're giving out money for grants, and it's nice to see that a lot of groups receive some money from this grant process, so I'm not going to harbor on it and give you the gears on it, Counsel Freezin, at this time, because I think most of the groups that are involved there will, will like the fact that they're getting some money to do some of their projects, so thank you for that, and maybe some of your message is getting through, that the more is the merrier when we're giving out money, so thank you for that.
Counsel Samraj?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I had a question for the CAO, actually, about FCSS funding. I know that, looking from the grant recipient reports, there's a lot of local organizations that get substantial amounts of money from FCSS. I was just curious how stable that funding is from the provincial government, or whether you have any thoughts or comments on that?
Through the chair, Counsel Samraj. I believe it's been fairly stable, but, you know, we don't have a long horizon on it, looking forward, we never quite know. And of course, it's up to the provincial government to change guidelines and that sort of thing, so there's always a bit of a question mark to it. I would maybe defer to Counsel Charlton, she's got a long history in dealing with it, so maybe she can give you more details.
I answer to anything. Through the chair to Counsel Samraj. Well, FCSS funding has been around about as long as I have, which is pretty long in the tooth, about 30 years. They do adjust it every once in a while, there is a very welcome organization called the FCSS Association provincially, that advocate and lobby on behalf of all of the FCSS programs across the province. So when there are changes, they're highly involved in it. We have no notice at this point in time that there'll be changes, but we can anticipate every once in a while, there is some sort of tweak to the granting system in some way, shape, or form, but it certainly has been stable for a lot of years.
Thank you. And was recently increased by the new government. Any other questions or comments? Counsel Freezin?
I just would like to bring, if I could, to all of your attention, the Raising the Curtain Celebration of Diversity and Inclusion is going to run, you'll remember, some of you, anyway, last year was the inaugural year, and it was a short period of time. They had such good success that it's going to span the whole month of March this year, and so, the schedule of events is in your package, and I'd really encourage you, obviously you can't go to every single thing, but I'd really encourage all of you to try to make it to an event or two, and just see the kind of diversity of community, and the collaboration that goes on to make these things a reality, and the way it brings people together from all walks of life.
I attended, I'm gonna say, three or four of the events last year, and they were really, they were quite informative, at the schools especially. Any other questions? All right, if we could vote on the items 1, 4, 5, 6? That was unanimous, thank you. Item two, which is the Arts and Heritage Advisory Board Recommendation for the Canalta Art, if there are any questions or comments on this. Counsel Samraj?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna be voting no on the Public Art Committee's recommendation for this, for this purchase, but I wanted to give a little history and context of why I'm voting this way. It's a hard vote for me to make, because I love public art, and I think it's a really important part of any community, but this one, I won't be supporting. So, for those of you in the gallery here and at home, the city has a public art policy that sets aside 1%, up to $100,000 of every new building, set aside for public art. With Canalta, the same thing was done there as well, except in this case, council, which is always their right, decided to deviate from that policy and purchase a Jim Marshall mural for the building. A purchase that I think is great, I think it's a beautiful addition to that building. However, that decision did come with some consequences, and I think the consequences are that there was some leftover money for, from that $100,000, which was then given to the Public Arts Committee to try and do a public art project with that. They went and requested for proposals for artists in 2016, none were suitable. They tried to get in 2017, and none again were found to be suitable by the committee. After that, they went to look for a list of artworks that were already, that were already completed to find something for that site. For me, that's problematic for a number of reasons. First is that, I mean, you want public art to be the focus and integral part of the design, which the Jim Marshall mural does. I think these two Buffalo statues that the committee recommended, you know, they're not site-specific, I think they're quite small in proportion to the building, I don't think they work particularly well for this, for this site. I recognize that the Public Art Committee had, has been working years on this, and they've worked very hard to come to that recommendation, so I don't, I don't fault them, but I think they were kind of playing with half a, they weren't playing a very good hand in this case. I would suggest that we reject the recommendation of Public Arts Committee, and I would suggest that we put this money into a reserve fund for public art in another part of the city. Thank you.
Are you making, are you making a motion to amend? You can, if you can get a second, or? So basically, you moved it, we take this $28,000 approximate and put it into a reserve fund? Second? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So now we have an amending motion on the floor to place this as basically a reserve account for future, doesn't have to be for the Canalta Center, it can just be in a public art reserve, okay? Any other questions or comments or debate on the amending motion? So I have Counsel McIntosh next, where did you want it?
This wasn't my initial comment, thanks, your worship.
Get, collect your thoughts.
If I, if we limit, put this money into a reserve account, that limits what it can be utilized for, which comes back to my initial question for the CAO. If we are allowed to, or we put up to $100,000 into an account for public art, we are not obligated to spend all $100,000, correct?
Through the chair, Counsel McIntosh. The full $100,000 has been budgeted for as part of the Canalta project, so if council does not want to spend this as part of the project, like, we haven't been able to close out the Canalta capital budget completely, because this piece has been sitting out there, so we need to formally then rescind that allocation to Canalta. We don't have a public art reserve, there isn't a reserve account with any specifics on it, so I'm not sure that you can move to put it into a reserve, but you can certainly move to spend it on something else, unless you want us to establish a reserve, so I think we'd need a little bit of guidance around that.
Yeah, okay, but I'm actually looking at the commissioner, I think maybe there is an art reserve?
Through your worship, we were just looking it up, there is a public art acquisition reserve. I have to confess, in the six years I've been here, I've never talked about it, so this is the first time, there's $100,000 in that reserve at the moment.
So I think the intent of your motion was exactly that, to put it into the art reserve, so I think we don't need a friendly amendment, I think that was the intent. Okay, so back to the original amendment, to Counsel Turner?
Thank you, your worship, well, I'm going to speak in favor of this, I think it's a little late in the game that we try to reverse this decision, we've asked our Public Arts Committee to do a fair amount of work, and there was a challenge for them, because they didn't have a lot of money left to spend, and it's a huge building. I think this was the best they could come up with, based on the amount of money they had, and the amount of submissions they had, so I think at this stage of the game, I'm going to still be supporting this.
The original motion?
The original motion, yes.
Okay, Counsel Dvignovski?
Your worship, I too will be supporting the original motion, and the reason I'll speak to that briefly is, I have, having sat on the Public Art Committee in the past, for me, the integrity of the whole process of having a public art committee is somewhat in jeopardy if we go against this. Now, there will be many people in TV land who will reject my comment, but I say that only because art is one of those kind of nebulous arbitrary realms in society. We hear a lot about art in other municipalities, Calgary being a recent one, we hear about art debates in larger metropolitan cities in the US, in Canada, and some of the debate that comes around it, but it is always coming down to a diverse group of participants who sit on a committee, who bring their collective vision and beliefs to that process, to identify art, that perhaps for people like me who appreciate art, but don't really have a thorough understanding of it, can have the opportunity to debate and challenge and talk about, and that's part of art appreciation, is looking at things and maybe having a disagreement, or seeing it differently than others. I'm not taking away from Counsel Samraj's point, I think it's well-intended, I just feel that if we are going to start debating the integrity of this particular artwork against the next decision they make, because there have been previous art pieces, I think the community knows what I'm talking about, that not everyone was on board with, but the art community picked them, and they've become part of our fabric, and part of our landmarks, and so, I don't, we have a process, we have a policy, I think we need to honor that, and so I will be supporting the original motion.
Thank you, Counsel Turnbull?
Thank you, worship. So first of all, to the Public Art Committee, I do have great respect for all people who serve on boards in our city, and this is not, for me, about your, what you picked or anything else. The process for me, I agree with Counsel Samraj, is that, yes, we have $100,000 to spend, if the mural had a cost $99,500, then we spent our money. We got it for, obviously, eighty, seventy-two thousand dollars? And so now, we're running around just trying to find something that we can find for $28,000 that may or may not be your first choice, had you have had the choice of spending $100,000. So please, there's no disrespect to you or your committee, sir, it, for us, it's simply a process, and I think if we get into a habit of simply saying, oh, we didn't spend it all, so let's find something to spend it on, I think that takes us down a very, very slippery slope. So I am going to vote against the spending of that money, and have it put into a future reserve that you may want to have another building that's coming up, such as the Senior Center, we'll have, obviously, arts for that, so that might give you a little bit more money to do a project that will really, really knock everybody's socks off, so please take it from both Counsel Samraj and I, that no disrespect is meant.
Thank you, Counsel McIntosh?
I'm gonna agree with those comments. It truly isn't about the art, I find these pieces of art fantastic. For me, this is an issue about public perception, on the city having a budget, didn't quite spend it all, and now has to have, find a way to get rid of the money, and nothing annoys the public worse than that, so I will not be supporting this.
Counsel Freezin?
Well, I, I know we've got an amendment on the
Well, I, I know we've got an amendment on the floor, but I, I guess it's important to clarify your position on the original motion in order to, you know, explain why you're, how you'll vote on the amendment, so...
They're basically opposed, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I will also be supporting, I will be supporting the original motion. You know, as Counselor Turner said, for one thing, it's, it's a little late in the game to be changing this. I think we have, we have put a public art committee in place, they've been there for many years, to do a job for us, and they have spent the better part of, well, over two years, working on this, trying to find what they would recommend as the appropriate piece. I don't take away from any of the comments that have been made here, but I just, I think if we do not support this now, this late in the game, it takes away, we're, we're almost saying we disrespect your work, it takes away from the integrity of the work that's been done, and you know, I, I think we all interpret art in our own way. I haven't always loved the pieces that have been chosen for certain things, but that's the awe and the beauty of art, you know, and, and so it's, it's an individual thing as well. I personally think, and I, the, the comments I've heard tonight are well-taken, I personally think our better consideration here is to have a look at the policy and the allocations we make in a bigger-picture way and say, hey, is this how we're going to continue to do public art? Are we in support of, of a big budget allocation for every new building? Do we, do we want to do it by way of a committee? What do we do if there, if the, the whole amount is not expended? Does it automatically roll into a reserve? Those are valid questions. I just don't think the way to deal with it is a one-off on one thing, it is a bigger policy issue. So, I'm gonna support the work of the committee here in good faith and, but I certainly will be, be amenable to having a look at the policy and, and those kinds of things in the future.
Thank you. Counselor Varga?
Very much has been said here, and I too will not be supporting the original motion, and it's no disrespect to the people that have done all the work to try and find the artwork that's there, but I, I think some of the comments have already come forward that the money's there, we should look at where we're gonna spend the money and bring it back. I like the fact that there, there will be a fund where some other public artwork can be put somewhere else within the city, on another building or another project, and the money is still gonna get spent, just at a different time and a different place.
You'll more likely sit in a reserve for years and years and years as well. Counselor Hirsch?
Well, your worship, just to kinda chime in, being the last one to make a comment on this, but...
No, you're not.
I will be voting for the amendment, as, as it indicated, and it isn't, again, disrespect in terms of the whole process. What did it for me, quite frankly, was, this is a, quite frankly, an afterthought, we're trying to close the books on the Canalta, and I'm hearing last, last, last kinda commentary, so I, I think I will absolutely support any art that's within the planning stages and, and part of a collective vision for any development, but to have it, just, and I have a sense that this is the case, that it's, it's kinda late in the game and the comment was made that we're late in the game in terms of the application. I think we're late in the game trying to, to unfortunately spend the money, and I, I'd be a little bit different if it went into general reserves, then I would be opposed to it, but the fact that we're saying, hey, we're, we're reserving it still for you, let's allocate it in a place that makes some sense.
Counselor Samraj?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, to Counselor Dymonowski's point about respecting the process, I, I agree, I mean, we have the Public Art Committee specifically for this reason, but I guess if council felt that that was so important, we wouldn't have deviated from this in the first place there. So, for me, you know, this is a good learning experience, I think the money will be used toward public art in the community, even if it's just not on this, on this site. You're right, it is late in the game and it is unfortunate that it came to my knowledge of the situation only recently, but I can only do, I can only vote on things that come up, that come up now. Thank you.
My mind made up on this one and you guys changed it tonight, so, that doesn't happen very often. You'll see with my vote, maybe. This is a really tough one, I think that one that sways me is to spend any money just to spend money, and that's, that's what finally got me. I, I, I'm gonna support your, your amendment. Yeah, so, as of now, unless there's any more questions or comments, the amendment on the floor is to place the $28,000 approximate into a public art reserve. Yeah, if we could vote? And that passes with, three, four, five, six, ten, no, six to three. So now, we can vote on the motion as amended?
Yep.
Any other questions or comments on the motion as amended? All right, if we could vote? Now, it's the amended one, so now, a yes vote is to put the money into a...
Sorry.
Okay, could you clear it? We're on the original motion as amended, which is now to place the money in a reserve, so a yes vote is to put money in reserve, a no vote is against that. And that's the same outcome, six to three.
Okay, so that's all the items dealt with because you withdrew item three. So, we're on to the next report now, item 5-4, page 55, Corporate Services Committee meeting February 27th, and this is for adoption and information with adoption being the tax auction reserve bid item, and as I indicated earlier, since we published the agenda packet, there have been four properties that have settled, so we can strike off the list, 341 Second Street Northwest, 42 Croker Street Southwest, 9 Rose Street Southwest, and 12 Rose Street Southwest, and that was from the, from the briefing note.
So, moved?
Second.
I'm also wondering if council wants to consider items one and two together and separate out item number three? Is there appetite for that? Yes, okay, so we'll do with items number one and two, as they are first on the agenda, the tax auction reserve and the public art system. Any questions or comments on items one and two? Counselor McIntosh?
Thanks, your worship. Just a question regarding item number two for the CAO, what is the likelihood that our notify-me-now will become obsolete because of this national system coming in? And are we as a city able to jump on that and then utilize it for our own personal needs?
Through the Chair, there's a lot of uncertainty around this, at this point, which is why we're saying for now, we just, yes, we will be able to, to jump on it, but we wanna monitor and see how effective it is. It has the potential to actually have broader capabilities even than notify-me-now, because they, they can do cellular broadcasts that we can't do on notify-me-now. So, if this is rolled out and it works extremely well and we're able to do the messaging that we need to do through their system as well, then yes, notify-me-now could become obsolete, but we certainly wanna take some time and make sure that the system works and that, I mean, we're coming up on a, on a spring with record snowfall in the mountains and, and we wanna be ready for any emergency that may occur, and we don't know how long it will take the feds to roll this out and make sure that it's fully functional, so we wanna monitor for a little while.
Plus, we're basically paying a yearly, lease fee, I'm gonna call it, an access fee from, so that we could, we could probably get out of that at some point, yeah. Counselor Samraj?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question either for yourself or for the CAO, just about process on, on some of these tax reserve properties there. So, these properties were unable to pay their, their property taxes for a number of years, this is the culmination of kind of a four-year process where they've been, where they haven't paid their taxes. Did they walk away from their properties? I mean, are these properties that are sitting empty? Yeah, I'm just wondering how it kind of gets to, gets to this point?
Some of them could be empty, some of them could still be owners' arrealing, or maybe even be rental properties as well. We will work with these people up until, well, one second before they actually go to auction, if they are able to come and pay off the outstanding tax liability, or even come to some sort of terms and, to work it out. From my experience here in 10 years, it's very, very rare that they actually make it to auction, there's, I don't know that we've even had one. Oftentimes, they're really difficult to auction as well because they're sight unseen, and so you're taking a little bit of a gamble on, on auctioning out a property that you don't know what the inside looks like.
Yeah, that was my follow-up question, I, I know that there's a scheduled auction for later on this, this March in City Hall there, so if people are interested, they don't have much to go on other than base...
Unless maybe perhaps they know the owner or something, yeah.
As its words.
Yeah, as its words, but, you know, maybe they know the owner and kinda help them out, and then they have seen the property, I don't know, but yeah, no, it's sight unseen.
Thank you.
Counselor Turnbull?
Thank you, worship. I just have a couple of questions. Number one, is there a reserve bid on these properties?
Yes.
There is, and number two, the, I'm assuming most of them would have a mortgage on it? Varies, right? Okay, yeah, thank you.
And, and we do work with the property owners, that if we do actually auction a property off and it's more than the outstanding balance, they, after fees unfortunately, they do get their equity. Any other comments? All right, if we could vote on items one and two? That was unanimous, thank you. Item three, the budget process update? This is for information. Counselor Friesen?
Well, your worship, I appreciate the update we have here, and I just would like to express my concern about a four-year budget cycle. So, I, I can certainly appreciate the fact that it is important to look ahead, I can absolutely appreciate that we have just been in, and are still in the process, process of finalizing a four-year strategic plan, so those planning periods would be synonymous. I'm just concerned that in a, in a world that changes, is changing more quickly all the time, that four years is a very long period to have as a budget cycle. Now, we can say yes, but don't worry, Counselor Friesen, because every year we'll have a look at it and we'll make whatever adjustments are necessary, and I don't, I mean, that, that sounds absolutely reasonable, except that as a member of the public, not as a council member, but I'm a taxpayer too, I don't particularly appreciate when council is always making all these adjustments on the budget, and I don't think we're going, I don't think we can get away from that, because despite the incredible expertise we have in-house, we cannot possibly contemplate everything that would happen, and as a taxpayer, I just don't want to be, and as a council member, I don't want to be making a lot of budget amendments, which creates uncertainty for the people we serve, particularly in the area of what it will cost them, what, what it means to them, potential tax implications and so on. So, I'm, I'm not saying that would happen, but I'm just concerned that it's too long. I think we can achieve the same thing with the four-year plan, I think we, in a couple of years, we can make some, we could make some adjustments if we needed to, but I just think four years is, is too long, and so I'm not, I don't have a problem with the, the process and so on, it's the four-year window that really bothers me, and so I'm going, I'm not going to support this for that reason.
Thank you, Counselor Turner.
Thank you, your worship.
So, I'm gonna ask for some clarification, because this is an information item, so if we had, the vote gets turned down, which I don't know, we're gonna have to send it back?
I would suggest the item just gets referred back to staff.
If, if it gets voted down.
Yeah, it's for information, so...
Yeah, if it passes, it's fine, because it's for information.
Yeah, and I would, I would recommend that you, that staff know that you want change.
Right, yeah, okay. Counselor Turner?
Thank you, your worship. I too have some concerns and reservations about a four-year budget, and I guess I think back to 2013 when we were doing a two-year budget and oil was $100 a barrel, and all of a sudden, within a year, it dropped to 30. That had pretty major budget implications for us, and I think in today's world, when you look at, a lot of our funding comes from other levels of government, those funding, those funds right now are kind of up in the air a little bit, we don't really know how stable MSI funding's gonna be, and I just noticed in the recent federal budget, infrastructure spending was cut considerably. So, there's a lot, a lot of unknowns to be able to sit down and look four years ahead and decide how we're going to spend our money, and also decide where our revenue is gonna come, come from, and, and I really, I know it's, it's okay to say that we're gonna be able to update it every year, and I, and I know we've done our strategic plan for the next four years, and that kinda gives staff some guidelines of where we wanna go, and I think at this time, I will not be supporting this four-year plan.
Thank you, Counselor Dymonowski.
Well, your worship, I'm, I too have some reservations, I'm, I'm torn, I, I understand from background information and, and talking to staff around the, the, the planning prudence that they see around a four-year budget, it's a tremendous amount of work, it's not just punching a bunch of numbers in and hoping they, they come to fruition as, as indicated, but there's, there's a very systematic and, and deep analysis that's done, and, and there is a projection of revenues against expenditures, and you anticipate certain things, you build on some, maybe some contingency in that regard, but I, I'd like to think about my own personal budget or, or a, a community organization who's looking at budgeting, four years is a long window, and I've been here long enough to recall the, the frustration and maybe even aggravation that the public would, would, would contest when, when the, when there were amendments made midway through a budget period. There's nobody, I, I think, out there today that would say that, that any kind of amendment is absolutely against the rules, but if you're gonna create a four-year budget and you're going to create some, some level, or the idea is to create some certainty or stability around that, then making amendments midway or partway through or all the way through just doesn't function well, and, and I don't, I think in some ways it may even be misleading to the public, it's not intentional, but it may be misleading because we could set standards that perhaps make a council look good, only to, after an election, hypothetically, come up with some projected numbers that allow us, or don't allow us to stay on course, and in which case railroad the whole process. So, I'm, I'm not trying to say it's that, that volatile, but I, I just think there's a lot of uncertainty, and in the past, even in two-year budgets, we had a lot of, a lot of uncertainty, and, and I know the police service, as a commission member, and Counselor Friesen as well, I don't wanna speak for them, but I know we've had some preliminary conversations around the, the significant concern around a four-year budget, and so, you know, the long and the short is, I just feel it's too long, I think we can still take the necessary steps to, to look forward and, and plan broad-based, macro-level, on many levels that allow us to create a course that we want to move down. Financially Fit is a good example, it's a 10-year window that we are already off course on, but we're, we're always looking forward beyond this budget period or the proposed one, so I think you can still do that effectively, it kind of creates borders upon which the, the budget can be reviewed and measured against as you make more accurate projections going forward, so for those reasons, I will not be supporting it, even though it's an information item, I will levy my objection to it.
Counselor Turnbull?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'm going to support a four-year budget for, for two reasons. We have an audit committee that, that quarterly looks at the progress of our budgets, we have a corporate services committee that looks at the quarterly reports, we have an energy committee that looks at the quarterly reports for both Genco, NGPR, and our environmental utilities, and that's what happens is, budgets are not set to be unchangeable, there, that's, that's your goal. There are so many influences that change that goal on a constant basis, regardless of whether you have a one-year budget or a four-year budget. And in the past, it seems our city got a little bit dizzy with the amount of money we were pulling in when gas was $11 a kilojoule, electricity was 13 and a half, 14 cents kilowatt hour, and as a result, what did we do? Not as good a job as I think we should have done in ensuring that we, we didn't go out there and go crazy, because as, just as Counselor Turner said, things change, and so we have to have this balanced approach of being fiscally responsible, finding all kinds of ways to operate our city more productively, more efficiently, but we also have to understand that there are certain things our city cannot do without, cannot do without good infrastructure, cannot do without parks and recreation, it cannot do without stable, well-organized electrical distribution and gas distribution systems. So, the second reason I'm like the four-year budget is, we, we could spend half our staff's time trying to do budgets a year and every two-year basis, and the time that I think I'd like them to spend on looking... I'd like them to spend on looking for savings in how we operate our city. So I'm going to support the four-year budget.
Thank you. Councillor Hirsch?
Well, your worship, I'm going to support the four-year as well, and a couple reasons for it. When this first got recognized some time ago, I had asked in terms of what really the motivation was. Quite frankly, it's because our, because the extension of our term limits are now four years. It really does wreak havoc with budgeting on a three-year plan when now the timing doesn't match. So as it stands now, with this going ahead, we will, new councils will receive only one-year direction in terms of a remaining budget cycle by the previous council, which I'm comfortable with. It gets a chance for us to get our feet underneath us. And then we lay out the next four-year plan. What makes sense for me, quite frankly, is it's kind of the opposite of what the comments have been made of where we're headed. I think for me, it's a great indicator in the medium term of where we're headed. It gives us another year to figure out, and for all the public, and, and for everyone to see exactly what the thoughts are in terms of a, of a budget. Haven't said that. We already live in the world of amendments. So for me, it's a bit of a non-starter, the argument about having multiple amendments. We have tremendous oversight, it was already indicated in the audit, et cetera. But for me, a question to the CAO, recognizing that the province of Alberta is now in a four-year municipal cycle, can you give an indication of, of any other municipalities and their trends? Are they heading four years, two years? What's happening in the, and just to give us some sense?
Through the chair, well, the practice varies, but we have seen many municipalities go from three to four because of the, the four-year term for municipal councils at this point. So if, if council's wish is to not go to four, we would then need to think through, does it mean we're stuck? We're actually then shortening the cycle, because the two-year budget cycle was, was an exception to bridge between the old and the new. And so are we then going to permanently shorten the cycle to two years rather than continue with the three? Because three would be impossible to manage with the council terms. So I do believe that that's kind of been the rationale that we've heard from other municipalities and municipalities our size that tend to go towards a four-year cycle.
Thank you, councillor Samraj.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, that was my point exactly. There are some practical considerations here regarding that three-year would probably be ideal, but, but because of the extending of the election term limits, it's, it's a different game now. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, if we could vote?
Well, this is an information item, so if you're in favor of the four-year, you're, you're just voting in favor of the information item. So that passes, six to three again. So...
So our final report from committees is item 55, page 66, Administrative Committee meeting February 28. This is for adoption.
Move reception.
Second. Adoption.
Adoption. Any questions or comments? If we could vote? That was unanimous. Thank you.
Moving on now to reports for reception. Item 61, page 74, you'll find the Heritage Resources Committee meeting minutes of February 13.
I'll move that report for reception.
Okay, seeing none, if we could vote? That was unanimous. Thank you.
Next report for reception is item 62, page 77, Municipal Planning Commission, meeting minutes of February 14.
I move this report for reception.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All right, if we could vote? That was unanimous. Thank you.
Moving on now to new bylaws for first reading. Item 71, page 98, bylaw 4473, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to repeal bylaw 4226, a dementia borrowing bylaw.
So moved. Add a set bylaw 4473, be read at first time.
Can we get a second here?
Second.
We got one. If we could vote? That was unanimous. Thank you.
The next new bylaws, item 72, page 100, bylaw 4474, bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to close a public utility lot at the west end of 10th Street Southeast.
Your worship, by a secret, you have a council to introduce bylaw 4474, and ask that to be read at first time.
I'll second that.
If we could vote? And that was unanimous. Thank you. Seeing no more business before this council, we are adjourned.